Notice is hereby given of a special meeting of the Friendswood City Council to be held on Monday, June 24, 2019 at 6:00 PM at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas, to discuss the items and business according to the agenda listed below. I'll call this meeting to order, ask Pastor David Bridges to come up, lead us in an invocation. And as soon as he's done, please remain standing, and we're going to have Jackson Smith and Ethan Wagner lead us in the pledges.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be with you, and I hope for the best for you this evening. Let's pray together. Lord God, we are grateful to be gathered tonight in this great place, Friendswood. We're thankful for the fathers and mothers that have given birth to this place. And we thank you for those who serve us today, the city council. And I pray this evening that you grant them wisdom to govern amidst conflicting interests and the issues of our times. I pray that you give them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Grant them, I pray, a keen thirst for justice and what is right, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement. And God, I pray that you'd grant them peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. And we pray these things through Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Good job, guys. Communication from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the city council may not deliberate on these items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include, but not limited to, applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Ron Cox.
As you're coming up, and I know you know the rules already, Ron. I'll raise the yellow card when you have one minute left, and the red card means your finish.
Thank you. My name's Ron Cox. I live at 120 St. Andrews here in Friendswood. I learned last week that you had on the agenda the item for the possible naming of a facility after former Mayor Paul Schrader. And it is for a park or an entryway or something related to the lake. I wanted to let you know that Paul was interested in this for a long time during his time as a council member and a mayor. My first day on the job was November 1, 1990, as city manager of this city. We had a short staff meeting. Some staff members probably thought it was too long. But we had a staff meeting, and the first place that Paul Schrader took me and probably John Branson as the Parks and Recreation Director was to Tom Madison's office. Tom Madison, at the time, was the chair of the Galveston County Parks Board. And in his office with Tom was Pat Halasy, who at the time was the general manager of the Galveston County Parks Board. I think that was his title. The subject of that conversation was Lake Friendswood. Paul had championed that from the late 80s, from the time that it was contributed, that the lake itself was donated, to the extent that the Parks Board had actually developed a rendering, a Parks Master Plan, for that. And we later took that Parks Master Plan and submitted it as for an application to the Parks and Wildlife Department. I just wanted to encourage you to consider that as you deliberate on naming this facility for Paul Schrader. He was a very, very good mayor, good man, and this would be a good acknowledgement of the work that he did in the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Dr. John Cole.
Mr. Mayor, Council, sorry for my relaxed attire. I dressed down in the summer, I apologize. I was on the Citizen Advisory Team on the Finance Committee, and there were some things that were interesting as far as the conclusions that they brought and what they wanted to offer to increase the debt for the city of Friendswood. And I know they're coming after me, and so you'll get all that in detail. However, what they're suggesting is the city to go into debt by many more millions, up to 40, 80. Even someone from the, one of the Drainage Committee, said that there is no limit on what was necessary for creating, I guess, a water protection for Friendswood so we wouldn't flood as much. So, of course, I'm in opposition to that. Apparently, I was only one on any one of the committees who were in opposition to that because the city's already $85 million into debt, and there's no lasting solution provided by this council, previous councils, mayor, to absolve that debt. Therefore, I believe that that one should be done away with first before any new debt is attached to the city. I also wanted to speak on, there were times of dishonesty from certain council members towards me. I don't take it personally, but I think if you're a public figure for Friendswood, there should be honesty. And Steve Rocky is one person that has been less than honest with me more than once, without getting into details. He, so I'll just leave it at that. However, I would like to encourage the council to remember that you are representatives of the city, and for those who are taxpayers and property owners in this town, please be honest. Thanks. Oh, I have this for the new council member. If I can leave this for Brian?
Okay, item five is our work session, a recommendation from the Citizens Advisory Team. Back to you, Ron.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you may recall a few months back, you authorized the commission of a committee made up of citizens across Friendswood to evaluate the needs of the community and potentially make a recommendation as to whether or not to hold a bond election this past, or this upcoming November. The committee has been meeting off and on a number of times since March, and this evening, the Chair of the Committee, Mr. Ron Cox, will give a brief presentation on their findings.
Thank you very much, Marad and Mr. Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity. I have appreciated also the opportunity to serve as Chair of the Citizens Advisory Team, which was specifically tasked to take a look at a potential bond issue for our community. And so, I wanted to take this time to do that. And let me also express my appreciation for the special council meeting that you all have set specifically for this purpose, and I know there's another item or two, but we really appreciate that accommodation. And with that, we know that you've got till probably midnight tonight, and I've got about 95 slides, and take plenty of time if you guys are ready to do that. Let you know, let you know how that works out. I hear that often. You're welcome to stay till midnight if you like. Yeah, that's exactly. But we do have, we do have a few slides, and we're going to kind of build this case as we go till we get to the end. What I want to do tonight is just to kind of review the charge of the committee, to make some opening remarks as far as how we organized ourselves and how often we met, look at some of the demographics of the city, and then take a look at findings and recommendations as a result of that, and then recommendations of the subcommittees, and you'll get a feel for that. And then, lastly, recommend to you at least our perception of how the bond propositions, if you elect to call a bond election, how they should be structured through the process. Your charge to us was to review the identified capital projects that you all had established over a period of time and make recommendations on a potential bond issue. The committee has gathered up, utilized all the resources that it had available to us, and everyone was very, very cooperative in their efforts to provide information to the team. The city staff was most helpful. If I start naming names, I'm going to forget, but Marad and Stephen and Katina, James Tony, and many in the Public Works folks, many other folks. So, we took them and utilized their resources. We also looked at the capital plans that you all have done and made available to us, looked at financial information, both historical and projected information, to kind of get a feel for how that should flow and how it would fit into any bond issue and what our capacities were, quite frankly. And then, through tours and observations through the course of these few months, a lot of people have done a lot of work. And in fact, over 75 citizens at least started the process and entered and in, came in and went out of the process on a volunteer basis. Whoever volunteered was happily accepted into the process. And so, we acknowledge, I acknowledge their work. And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask those who are here to stand that were participants in that, in this process.
Thank you all. Yeah, thank you.
And they've done a great job and took their job seriously as well. So, we thank, I thank them, and I thank them for asking me to kind of lead this process. I didn't run for this office. And it seemed like I was drafted by one or two people that were sitting on the front row through the process. And then, again, thanks to the city manager and the city staff for their work. The Citizens Advisory Committee, in an effort to kind of get organized, established five subcommittees. One on Parks and Recreation, one on Drainage, one on Finance, one on Streets, and one on Facilities. On Facilities, Brian Bounde served as the Chair. For Streets, Skipper Jones served as the Chair. I think he did. He didn't tell me he didn't. And for Finance, Robin Hall served as the Chair. Parks and Recreation, Brett Banfield, and for Drainage, Philip Ratisow. They did a great job of leading their groups, providing them information, and keeping them involved. And if there are questions that I can't field through the process, I'd like to have the opportunity to call on them, those Chair people, for assistance since they led their particular groups. So, the full group met six times as a body. The subgroups, the subcommittees, met for a combination of 30 times over the life of this process. And these meetings included meetings with the citizens and the staff, the tours of facilities, a review of the Drainage Committee's, City's Drainage Committee recommendations, capital improvements plans, and financing structures and options. So, let me talk a little bit about the process. You all understand the concept of making sausage. Sausage is, making sausage is ugly business. And it sometimes gets a little ugly in the process, but sausage is supposed to taste good when it comes out. So, I'm not going to detail the process of making sausage, but it was a process. Each committee had its role, and each committee was charged with bringing its recommendations to the group meetings. The opinions and recommendations of the committees were divergent, and their recommendations meant there would be competition for a finite amount of money. And my job was to make certain that every committee had its say, and every member of the group had an opportunity to express their opinion. Everyone who wanted to speak was provided that opportunity. And my goal was to get to a decision for the whole, not for or against any one committee, not for or against any one person, but for the whole and for the citizens in the city of Friendswood. That is, for the citizens of Friendswood to be able to make decisions that provide them choice and provide them the opportunity to decide on which projects for the best quality of life and city services in the most efficient way possible are best for this community. We hope that we have arrived at a recommendation that meets those needs. And so, let's begin. The city's population has grown by 3% per year since 1990. In 1970, the city's population was 5,675 people. And in 2019, it's estimated to be 41,193. At Build Out, it's estimated to be about $57,000 people. We don't know how fast it will grow from here forward, but I'm personally of the opinion that the opportunity for taking advantage of the growth that we've incurred is probably no greater now than it will ever be. And that as we push on toward that 57,000 people, it's going to be harder and harder and harder to maintain the pace at which we've grown. We all know that a lot of the vacant land now is in hard-to-develop areas, flood plains, oil fields, and whatever. So, we, I think personally that the timing for this is probably as good as it will ever be, particularly for the kinds of projects that we're asking for or that we're recommending. Property value growth has been kind of an interesting phenomenon when we began to look at the recent history of that. Over the last seven years, 2013 through 2019, that's six years, I guess, the property values in this city have grown by 41%. Now, we don't know if that will be sustained, just like the growth pattern won't be sustained, but we know what we have now. And that rate of growth is out of our control. We can't control economic factors. We can't control property appraisals. But we can control, to a large extent, the desirability of our community. And the projects we're talking about, I think, speak to the desirability of our city. If we don't keep up with the quality of our infrastructure and services, then our desirability becomes at risk. And I believe that each project set forth here affect desirability, not only of neighborhoods, but of the city as a whole, north to south and east to west, if we can figure out which way our city lies on the map. I'm still not sure. I've lived here 20 years, or 30, almost 30. So, that growth, then, has sort of led to some observations. And as we move through this process, this rationale was provided to the committees to make decisions, to base their decisions on this type of rationale. And this speaks to the desirability of our community. These were the same, this was the same rationale that was used in 2013 for the bond election that was successfully passed back then. So, these desirability factors are, were weighed against each project that came along. In addition to that, there were several additional criteria that each of the committees established and added to that on their own. Additional rationale by the Drainage Committee, for example, did not affect the projects, the type of projects, but did, they did consider the priorities for those projects relative to the bond election. They did recommend some adjustments to the matching amounts as well, and they recommended an adjustment to the, for an inflation factor, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit more. And they have a recommendation with regard to the proposed proposition wording. That will come a little bit later, but let me talk about this inflation issue. The Drainage Project is the only one of all of the projects being submitted that has a long life associated with it. And we know that the City Drainage Committee estimated as much as 15 years to implement. 15 years in the life of most projects, particularly bond projects, is a long time. Most projects that are submitted can be done within five or 10 years at the most, and you all know that. 10 is an outside figure, and that would be if something went wrong and you had to kind of regroup. So, most of these are more front-end loaded projects. This is a back-end loaded project. So, we don't know, we not only don't know how, when those projects will come along, we don't know how much matching that will be required. We don't know those kinds of things. So, it seemed prudent to add an inflation factor into the budget that was created by the city committee. There are some pressures that we know about. We know there's natural growth, but we also know that Harris County and others have put together $5 billion in bonds that are going to be out on the street sooner or later, and that's going to create competition for services. And we all know when times are good, prices go up. And so, just for your consideration, they have proposed that as well. The Streets Committee identified, looked at additional criteria like mobility needs, aligning the current and future transportation needs, making responsible, cost-effective recommendations, enhancing the traffic study that's already been done and what needs to be done next, and what will deliver the best benefit to the greatest number of citizens, sort of the cost-benefit ratio, if you will, in this process. The Parks Committee made an additional criteria, set of criteria recommendations to say, let's deal with what we have. Brett said, let's fix, let's fix up what we got. I know that's good English because he said it. So, let's fix up, let's fix up what we got. Let's do our upgrades and our upkeep to what we have now rather than trying to build something new, a new regional park or something like that. And so, their focus was on our existing park system, not anything new. The Facilities Committee did a great job of touring every city, every city facility, and they looked not only at its condition but at its needs. And so, they added needs and condition to that criteria in making their recommendations. And their recommendations, you'll see toward the end of the project, span across these various disciplines that we're talking within. So, their recommendations for facility projects span across two or three different areas that we're emphasizing for the bond proposal. So, let's talk about what the Drainage folks and each of the subcommittees looked at through, and what their recommendations included. For Drainage, we've got a few photos here. This is Phil Ratisow Street, I think. And then, there are just a couple of other pictures that come up through this process. But the Drainage recommendations specifically focused on, and again, this is all for Clear Creek. It's not for any tributary or area outside of Clear Creek. This solely relies on Clear Creek, just like the city committee did. It focuses on terracing and buyouts. Terracing and buyouts are the key issues. There were a couple of other things that were originally in the budget, de-snagging and bridge raising, but if terracing is done correctly and soon, then that mitigates against a lot of the need, according to our committee, according to this committee, for a lot of those others. So, they placed their priority in the terracing and de-snagging area. The inflation, we've already talked about, and they also recommend that any design, any future design or any design of the terracing should be compatible with parks and recreation, parks and leisure things. What they don't want, and what none of us want, is something that looks sort of like that. And nowadays, literally, the Corps of Engineers wouldn't let you do that. But we don't want that sort of facility, but something that looks more green, usable, and acceptable to the community as a whole. And there are some great opportunities when you're trying to tie the parks together with trails and bike paths and things of that nature that we wouldn't otherwise have and haven't otherwise had over the life of this community because we haven't had access to that through easements and other rights of way. So, the budget for that, this is how the budget works out. The $152 million that you see is the total cost of the project less de-snagging and bridges. And then, you'll see that the 20% match, I think that was originally brought out in the budget from the city committee, has been increased to 25%. A lot of the, a lot of the funding agencies require 25% funding, so the committee wanted to build that pad in to make sure that there was plenty of money, as well as the inflation. And you can see at the bottom of that table that the inflation factor is about $9 million. That's compounded interest and not simple interest. So, the recommendation from the Drainage Committee grew from what the city committee originally proposed of about $32 million to $47 million, $9 million of that being the inflation factor. The Streets Committee has made some recommendations that are really more than just street-related, they're transportation-related. Transportation enhancements is what we'll eventually call those on a table you'll see in just a little bit. They're recommending that we, that the city become very aggressive with the sidewalk plan, that it makes some adjustments to traffic around two campuses, Westwood and Klein, that some improvements to turn and storage lanes be done at 528 and Sunset, 518, 2351, and at Moore Road to accommodate heavier traffic that we now all work our way through on a daily basis. To also enhance the traffic study with a traffic signalization and optimization study to try to figure out how to better make the traffic flow. And then, what I think it's more than seed money, and that's for lack of a better term, funds to provide the matching amount for Friendswood Parkway in the process. And so, just quickly, here's a kind of a view of that Sunset and 528 area to develop that right-hand turn lane. The 518 and 2351 area to extend the storage area so you're not backing up traffic too far and that traffic begins to flow better. This is really hard to see, but you can see some blue and green and yellow lines and these various options. But this is particularly for Westwood, and you'll see on the bottom option, three, where the yellow is, that that actually includes a storage lane on 2351 itself. So, it does, it does require some modifications to a state road at that point if that option is taken. That gives you an idea of the projects that they have focused on, not just streets, but traffic, mobility, transportation, those kinds of things. And this is their budget for that work. Sidewalks, $2 million citywide, the turn lanes, the traffic enhancements that you see, and then the money for Friendswood Parkway, $3 million, a total of $7.6 million. Parks and Recreation folks, again, took a look at the existing parks. So, they kind of combined the Stevenson Park and Old City Park upgrades into one area to discuss. They've included the reconstruction of walking trails, but the construction of new walking trails in Old City Park particularly. Restroom facilities, these restrooms should, probably not as old as I am, but I'm thinking they're getting close, and they all kind of function that way, I think, too. So, it's time to, that didn't come out right, did it? It's time to upgrade and rebuild those, rebuild those restrooms. Playground equipment for the Stevenson Park and Old City Park. And the swimming pool, the swimming pool's been a subject of a lot of discussion. We now have new restrooms, or will shortly, if they're not completed, but we have restrooms, and that was a great thing to have. But the pool is called Sesquicentennial Pool. And I'm not sure exactly the date, but if you go back to Sesquicentennial, that was 1976. So, if it's actually that old, and somewhere between '76 and '85, I think it was. So, if it's actually that old, and somewhere between 76 and 85, I think it was, it was constructed. Either way, it's about lived its, its useful life, and it was constricted simply as a lap pool. There are various estimates for the amount of money to be used to rebuild and, and re, and spend on this, and we'll, we'll get to their budget in just a minute. But, they're not recommending the full reconstruction, but a reconstruction of the pool. And then, a gateway entrance to Stevenson Park and additional parking at Old City Park. The gateway entrance would be some feature to be designed, some feature that council would be happy with, that would turn the, the old location of the, of the fire station number one into a feature that would be a great entryway and gateway to Stevenson Park. And then finally, the additional parking. The additional parking would be, I'm going to talk about here in just a minute. For Renwick Park, built in the late 60s, like a lot of things in this community, built by volunteers and has served its purpose well, it's been rebuilt two or three times since I've, since I've, that I know about, and at least twice in the time that I've worked here for the city. But, it's in need again of another, of another rebuild. Restrooms and concessions, that's the original building that was put out there. Additional field netting, perimeter fencing, field netting for safety purposes, perimeter fencing, converting one of the fields, number five, to synthetic turf, because it has some drainage problems associated with it and doesn't drain well. And so, they're, they're recommending that we just resolve that problem by putting synthetic turf and being able to play out there fairly quickly after, after the rains clear up. And then, other overall upgrades to the dugouts, the awnings, the field houses, lighting, insulation, and other kinds of things. For 1776 Park in the, in the green belt, the Clear Creek green belt. So, that's the new name for the trail system that the Parks Committee came up with, and maybe somebody else, for the trail system that would be within Clear Creek and, and on the terracing that would be constructed. And so, 76, 76 Park is an integral part of that. It's in it, it's on it, it's there. And they're recommending some upgrades to the parking lot, the fencing, and some things to prepare and, and provide, quite frankly, people better access to a very pristine area of our, of our community that probably not a lot of people even realize they have access to. Utilize these to, to fund maybe other kinds of, these funds to fund not only the trails and the bike paths, but pocket parks and other kinds of things that would be appropriate for that green belt, but not impede flow during the flood time or, or wash away as The parking lots, there's a need for, always a need for more parking. And the Parks Committee is recommending, from a policy perspective, that when parks, park, parking lots are designed for this area, they follow what's called the Green Grid Paver Parking System. Green grid pavers, allowing, you can see, for grass to grow up and be, and, and my understanding is that they even have some detention capability, but they do drain quickly. And, and those two photos both show that green grid paver. My understanding is the one on the left that's marked off is, the grass is just cut shorter, so you can kind of see down to the bottom. But, the other is, it just looks like a natural yard and cars are parking on it. So, that's a recommendation, a policy recommendation, just like the drainage committee has some policy recommendations, so does the Parks Committee. This is the park summary, Stevenson and Old City Park, Renwick Park, 1776 Green Belt Park, and Stevenson Park City Pool Rehab. I think the, the top-end budget for the pool was like 5.5 million, and so, this is about half of that amount to get a new pool, but maybe not all the amenities that would have been planned or looked at in the master plan. Facilities. Again, they looked at, at all the facilities and, and made recommendations on several, and, and most of the facilities that were in most need. Fire Station Two and, and, and the training facility are, are really kind of being lumped into one, one budget category, if you will, because they're on the same piece of property. What you see there is not Fire Station Two, that's the Fire Station on Woodlawn, and that's what we want it to look like, okay? So, that's a rendition of what, what it can look like and should look like out there. But, the current facility is, is a metal building. It's just a metal structure, as we all know, and certainly much smaller than it needs to be for the size of community that we have, and, and the needs are far outweigh the, the capability of the, of this facility to provide that. It's the second-oldest of all the facilities that we have. The training facility, this photo does show the, the fire station, and it, it is the best one we had of, of the training facility in the time that we had to find photos. But, but the facilities behind that, as you all know, and it's, it's constrained by, by space, and, and it's constrained by the ability to do the kind of training that they need to do. So, this project has been on the fire department's capital project plan for a long time, and it was passed over in 2013 as well. The, the training facility was passed over in 2013. So, if you put those two together, then you've got both Fire Station Two and the training facility as being upgraded. There was some thought, why don't we go next door? Why don't we go to Pearland? Why don't we go somewhere else? Well, if we've got volunteers in Pearland and they're, they're training but required to respond to a fire, then they're essentially and effectively out of town. And fire training facilities and good facilities affect the ISO rating, which affects all of our insurance as well. So, there's practical reasons to keep that inside the city. The Public Safety Building, it's hard for me to believe that that building is almost 20 years old. By the time that the upgrades would be made, it would be 20 years old. They have a great need to expand their emergency management capabilities inside the building, as well as office space, and then to increase the parking for the public outside the building and make that available, and so that has been recommended. Public Works Building. Public Works, the relocation of the Public Works Building is needed, not just because it flooded, but because of where it is. The Public Works Building will become a part of the terracing project when that is approved. And so, Public Works can't go back, or if it does, it's going to impede the effectiveness of the terracing project. And so, where does it go? Well, logically, it goes to the Food Line Building, and I know you all are, are looking at opportunities and trying to figure out ways to actually purchase that building. This money would be for the renovation of that building after you purchase it. So, we're assuming at this point that you guys have the plan worked out for the purchase, but the, but the renovation would come along here. We know we can't go back, can't go back to the old, old Public Works Building for any real purpose. And then finally, the Civic Center, and we're putting a slash shelter site. The, the Food Line Building, I did not mention, is slated, it's our understanding, is slated to be used as a shelter when needed for emergency purposes. It will be a place to stage equipment and operations on the east side of the creek. This facility would be available on the west side of the creek as well. And the Joyner Plan did a very good job of outlining all of, all of those possibilities for its use. Joyner Plan did have an inflation factor in it that would have gotten that project up to a little bit higher than what we're recommending, but we're midway into that, the life of that plan, and I'll talk about that in just a minute. This is our oldest facility. At one time, it was touted as being one that could be added on, a second story could be added on to, and I think that's been proven to not be available to us. It has available land around it. It can be a showpiece for downtown and for the community. It's not a convention center. It's not a conference center. It is a civic building to be used, and it can be used for the community. It's designed to be that way, for the community, designed to be used for recreation, and it can be more than what it's now being used for, almost solely for senior activity building. So, it was, we thought originally, when it was, when it was opened up as an activity building, that it could probably be used for that purpose, but it's just, it's just too small and it's not built that way, and it never has been really used that way. So, that is also being recommended. So, this is the budget for, for the facilities. The Civic Center was budgeted for something along, at, at, at build-out over a period of time, up to about $8.5 million, I believe. So, this is sort of the midway in that planning process and, and does account for inflation from the original cost estimate, should you have built it when the, when the Joyner Plan was, was completed, but this, this, so this does take into effect some inflation in that regard. Fire Stations Two and Three, I mean, I'm sorry, Fire Station Two and the training upgrades, training field upgrades, police station upgrade, and then the line building renovation, Food Line Building renovation. Facilities for just under 19 million, 18.8 million. So, finance. So, many of the committees said finance is getting in our way. They're, they're saying, how do we do this? The Finance Committee was, had to look at how do we fund something like this, and at what level can we really afford to do what we do? And they did a great job of doing that, and, and I appreciate all of the work that they used. They provided the rationale, that initial rationale where you saw, how does it comply with those desirability factors? They reviewed the financial impact that these recommendations might have. They looked at funding sources and do have some recommendations in that regard that are non-bond issue-related. They, they looked at what our current bond maturities will be in the, on the general obligation side, the tax debt side. And then, reviewed a little bit the, the fire and EMS volunteer contributions, activities fees, and then kind of looked at our property tax structure and our property tax rate structure. Let me talk about some of these things a little bit. What, what we, what we have are homestead exemptions, we have property taxes, we have bonds, with tax increases, sales taxes, activity fees, all of those sort of become the package of where are our revenue alternatives? Outside of that, there are really none outside of that. And messing or dealing with any one of those, increasing or decreasing, has its own set of issues associated with that. And, but those were all, all done. There's no doubt that the committee, the Finance Committee and the, and the Citizens Advisory Committee all encouraged the re, the re-up of the street sales tax when it comes along as a viable, useful, needed alternative for our community. They also took a look at the tax rate, and I want to show you a couple of slides here in just a little bit, and what's happened to that tax rate over time. So, over time, the, the tax rate has gone down. Over time, we've, we've had the highest exemption level that we can possibly have. Over time, we've given people over 65 a little tax break, which I truly appreciate, but that, that does affect capacity and availability of funds. And then, over time, those activity fees have just kind of sat where they were initially placed a number of years ago. So, this is the tax rate history for the city. This doesn't, this is no indictment for this council member, it's just a, a pattern that, that, for this council, but it, but it is a pattern that's been going on fairly steadily since 2003. Since 2003, you've lowered the tax rate by 10 cents total. And that doesn't seem like a lot, that's pennies, as, as the case may be. So, we asked the staff to give us an indication of what's happened, I'm going to, I'm going to go to the next slide and then come back to that one. What's happened to our tax income over that, well, that's not even the right one either. So, let me just back up, it's, it's in the next section. We, we wanted to, we did, and I'll show it to you in just a little bit, an analysis of, of what that revenue would have been like had you not decreased the tax rate. And, and there's some finance, some really huge financial impacts. We asked, we asked the, the staff to provide us with a, an indication of, in a vacuum, just looking at a bond issue with our current capacities, how much could we issue? How much could we, how high could we go? So, I take you to the, to the last column on the right, the 5 cents. And the reason we kind of focused on the 5 cents was because we said that we could increase taxes by 5 cents in, 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 in 2013 to gain $24 million on debt service if, if they have to. And we, we know that you didn't do that, but that's the way it was, it was discussed to the public at that time. So, they expected as much as 5 cents. You can see that with the new values, that 5 cent has gone from 24 to 43 million dollars just in and of itself, and that's because of property values having increased, and you'll see a little bit of an inflation factor added in there of about 1 to 1.5%. So, so that sort of gave us our first benchmark, and it really took, there's, there's a guy that may be standing in the back of the room, I'm not sure if Chief is here, but he used to say, you've just sucked all the air out of the room. Well, that took all the air out of the room when we realized that at minimum 32 million of that is going to go to drainage, so what's left? And so, we began to take a closer look at some other factors. The, the key factor was, we can't look at debt service in the vacuum. We've got to look at debt service and how it matures and when it matures, and what capacity rebuilds itself, regenerates itself over time. And this was a very telling piece of information, and in fact, it put the air back in the room. We were all able to breathe again, and we didn't get those two things immediately. It took us a few weeks to, to get that information. You'll notice in 2026, we have $9.3 million in geo-obligation debt that's being retired. A portion of your debt service tax rate is applied to those, to those taxes up until that point. We have other debt that, that retires in 2030 and in 2031, a combined amount of debt of $36.7 million will be retired in the 15-year life of the Drainage Project, for example, and that's the window we used for that, for that look. That created additional capacity, because you can use that existing debt service to, to roll that tax over into the next bond issue, if you will. So, Robin developed this, this slide that just shows that eventually, if we got to a nickel of increase at the bottom of that slide, it would produce with those debt retirements $90 million worth of capacity over that 15-year period. And we've had that confirmed. Katina is comfortable with that, Robin's comfortable with that, Finance Committee's comfortable with that, and so, if she doesn't run out of the room, I think we'll be all But it, but, but it, it changed the environment that we were having to work in, in terms of capacity that we had.
Ron, can I ask you a quick question on that? Does that include potential property value?
No, no, it does not, and I'm glad you pointed that out. That's in my notes. That's static, that is pure debt service payments. So, as property values grow, just like they did between 2013 and now, you took advantage of those property values and declined to add any debt service toward that, toward those bond payments that came, that, that were put in at that point in time, because you had property value increases. You may have that here, but the important thing about that is that we're not relying on those property value increases for this tax. We, 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 we thought about it, we thought about relying on property value increases, but realized, quite frankly, that that's out of our control. We, we can't estimate when that's going to be or what that's going to be. And so, this is purely debt service payments. And, and so, the picture could even be better than that, but we can't predict what it is. We can factually talk about this as a, as a capacity, amount of capacity.
Ron?
Yes?
Did you, did you all figure in the 3.5% cap we're under now?
I'll speak to that. So, the, the legislation that passed this past session, debt is not included in the 3.5% calculation. So, when they evaluate any new revenue that the city or any municipality may bring in, they take debt, voter-approved debt off the calculation, they take new construction off the calculation, and only look at the valuations of existing property from the previous tax year to the new tax year. So, we can, if the voters approve the bond package as proposed, it has no impact to the 3.5% cap. three and a half percent cap.
That was a good answer. That was, that was an answer we were interested in as well, knowing that, that the laws have changed beyond our control. So this is the, this is the, um, table that I was, uh, thought I was headed to a while ago, and I wasn't. So we, we also asked the staff, what would have happened had you kept your tax rate at a, at a constant level over the last, uh, six years? We know property values went up, and we know you all worked hard to stay at the effective tax rate. But what if you took the money between the effective tax rate and that, that flat, that, that rate that you had in twenty thirteen and applied that to capital projects? How much would it actually give us? Seven point two million dollars in that time period was a surprise to us. Uh, and it was really, it was really a shock. So, uh, ultimately, one of our recommendations is going to be for, from a policy perspective, we, we can't control that decision-making process, only you can, but from a policy perspective, uh, it, it seems more prudent if you can, if you can do it from a political and a policy perspective, keep that tax rate the same and still meet those three and a half percent requirements, those property taxation requirements, and then set aside that difference for, uh, for a period of time to build capital projects of some kind. That's a pay-as-you-go. That's the old-style pay-as-you-go that we've talked about over the years versus issuing debt and paying interest on that for twenty years. That is, uh, if you'll think back to the Civic Center, is about the cost of the Civic Center that, that could have been saved. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not indicting anybody, I'm just saying this is a little different way to look at how your tax money can be used. So let's talk a little bit about bond packaging. The bond packaging was done in order to give voters choice, multiple choices, in order to, uh, align project relationships as opposed to keeping them in those categories and to meet current and future needs. The needs identified were over two hundred million as we went through this process. Uh, ninety million of those would be sourced from inside the city. The other balance would come from the matching funds and things of that nature has been estimated by the drainage, uh, city drainage committee. The recommendation is for eighty million, eighty point six million inside the city. Remember, we've got ninety million in capacity, uh, to be able to do something like this. So if you look at the impact, assuming that you issued the debt now for five, five-cent debt on ninety million dollars, uh, for the average home bill, the existing average home value, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, almost three hundred thousand dollars, the annual cost to that would be a hundred and twenty dollars for eighty million dollars worth of improvements over that fifteen-year period. And assuming that the new home average, which is now pushing five hundred thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand for just the home and not the property itself, uh, would, uh, would, would cost the taxpayer about a hundred, uh, almost two hundred dollars a year. And that's assuming that the debt was issued now, and it's not assuming any property growth, it's not assuming the things that, that you all were able to do after the two, twenty thirteen bond election. So the bond package does include, uh, the, the nine and a half million dollars in inflation for drainage. Uh, it does include a packaging note, and this is what I referred to earlier, that the, the, the drainage committee has recommended that, that, uh, you'll see in just a minute that we're combining the drainage project and the public works project together because they are so integral, that there be a, a delineation in the proposition itself between those, uh, those projects and the dollar amounts associated with those projects. And then, um, and then, uh, we wanted to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Cole and, and the fact that Mr. Cole has consistently, and even today, has, uh, recommended a structure that would eliminate our debt rather than add more debt, and we want to acknowledge, uh, his, his recommendation in that project. So this is the, this is the package. Package the Civic Center as a separate bond proposition in the amount of seven point seven million dollars. Package the drainage and public works together for a total of forty-nine. That's forty-seven for the, uh, that may not add up quite right. That's forty-seven and, and, uh, I was, and two, forty-seven and two. I was thinking about the three for the, for the streets, for the Friendswood Parkway. The parks for six and a half million, public safety for nine point one, transportation for seven point six, for a total of eighty point four million dollars. And you'll probably want to rec, you'll probably want to massage that number just a little bit and say it's on sale for seventy-nine ninety-five. And, uh, and, but, but whatever that comes out to be, you can see where we arrived at those numbers. Now, this is sort of interesting. We've, we've, we have all acknowledged in the Citizens Advisory Team that, that drainage is, uh, the, the, the number one need in our community at this point. Drainage wasn't even on the list in the twenty thirteen bond, bond proposal, but it is now, and you can see that it represents sixty-two percent of the total amount that we're recommending here. And the others, uh, generally lie at nine, ten, eleven percent of the total amount. If you just, if you took out, uh, drainage in and of itself, the balance of the others, some little less than forty million dollars would be generally, uh, uh, an amount that you think would be normal for our city, uh, with, with its growth. And that's sort of what everybody, I think, was thinking at the time that we began this process. Uh, you know, forty, forty-three, that forty-three million was kind of the magic number. But, uh, the air came back in the room, we, we took a look at this, and, uh, and we made that, made that recommendation. These are the details of that, and you're welcome to peruse those, uh, as you want. Uh, this is the maximum cost of the bond to the homeowner, should that five cent, in these areas of home value, uh, anywhere from a hundred thousand up to a million dollars. And you can see, we've kind of earmarked the average home value and the, the average new house value here, just for you to compare those with the others. So, you know, my taxes would go up depending on the house that I live in, anywhere from forty dollars a year to four hundred dollars a year if that five cents were issued right now, or when that five cents is issued, assuming no growth in the property values and those sorts of things. There are a few policy considerations that are not bond-related that we wanted to relate to, and I've hinted at those before. We would recommend that you establish that policy, take a close look at that policy for a flat tax rate and do what you can to be able to set aside funds for capital reserves. Uh, when the new Civic Center is built, I understand that the current fees are what the fees were when the activities building was open. That's no fee for a person inside the city and twenty-five dollars for anyone outside. They pay for services if there's a special program or things of that nature. But I, I would expect that the use of that building is going to go up because of its availability type and size, and fee structure would be appropriate, and I know you guys would do that, you all would do that. Do what you can to encourage the volunteer fee to continue. The volunteer fee runs somewhere around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, and, uh, an ambulance costs close to two fifty right now. And a, and a fire truck costs a million now, almost, and, and, well, maybe a half a million for a fire truck, but the ladder trucks now cost closer to two. That, the one we have now costs a million. So, uh, so that, those expenses are always going up. It, we encourage the, uh, the, the public, the citizens, to, uh, re-approve that sales tax when it comes up, uh, in, uh, in its timeframe. Uh, the new parking lots to be of this, uh, green grid paver system, and that the, uh, that the drainage design always include, uh, that, that with parks and, parks in mind, leisure, leisure and parks in mind. So we appreciate very much the opportunity. You're saying, I appreciate very much you getting through with this. Uh, but, but we do appreciate the opportunity. It, it didn't come without, uh, sausage making, and, uh, and, uh, it, but, but we think it's a good product and one that we hope you'll consider seriously. Uh, and following this meeting, the group stands adjourned. Um, there are those of us who will be ready, uh, and willing to take the next step when, when and if you call the election for whatever you call it for, uh, to help get it passed. They are important projects. And that's my last slide, I promise.
Thanks, Ron. A lot of great work, Ron. Uh, we really appreciate it. Uh, I know, uh, so many people stepped up to volunteer their time, and, and, uh, you and the subcommittee leads did yeoman's work here to bring us all together, and I appreciate it. Thank you. I know we have some questions. I'll start with Steve.
So is his time limited?
Steve, Steve's going to talk longer than you, Ron.
Oh, no.
I have a lot of questions. You want me to hold and wait and let other people?
Let other people dive in and...
All right. Well, I'll, I'll start with one that actually I think you, they just wrote down. When you said you were going to delineate the, the drainage bond from the, um, from the other bill, from the facility, how are you going to do that on one bond?
That's not, that's, that's a question I can't answer. I, I'm just saying that the, that the drainage committee has recommended that.
So typically, when there's a bond proposition that's put forth, there's language in the proposition that says, for instance, uh, when Galveston County did the bond election in twenty seventeen, said transportation projects in these communities, and it lists Friendswood and a number of other, other cities. Uh, similarly, when we executed our, we put the bond propositions before the voters in twenty thirteen, we said we're going to do park improvements in Stevenson and, uh, at Lake Friendswood, so on and so forth, and other projects. In order to delineate it, we'd have to modify the bond wording substantially to, to clearly say this amount of money goes for these projects and this amount of money goes for another projects. Ultimately, whatever this council votes on has to be submitted to the Secretary of State for approval so that they find it, that it's fitting with the requirements of the law.
Yeah, so let me just point out that we, we did not, uh, get into bond language. It wasn't, it's not our responsibility for that, and we don't have the expertise for it. You all have that responsibility. So just, just note the general, just note the comment for your consideration, that recommendation for your consideration.
Okay, well, I have, and you, Phil, you want to get up? Because they're going to come to you.
And by the way, all these are questions.
The guys, the guys on the subcommittee are there if I'm not...
These are questions, these are not challenges, by the way. I just want to get information. Um, so when you look at what the original sub-team presented, what you guys are presenting, uh, you've removed the bridge raising and the de-snagging, which was a total of forty-three million of projects, uh, but you only lowered the total project cost twenty-one million. So that means that for the terracing, buyouts, and engineering costs have been twen, raised twenty-two million. Can you give me the data and calculations that went behind that?
Well, we've got all that. We'll share the, the presentation that's got all that data in there. We, we can give that to you. What we did was when we went looking at all the projects along Clear Creek that Harris County Flood Control and the Corps of Engineers, they require that twenty-five percent match. And so that's where some of the numbers came up. Then we looked at also where, uh, the relocation of, uh, drainage li, drainage connections, sewer lines, uh, anything else we run into there, uh, because we know that's going to happen, we, that's put into that. Also, we put in, uh, there, in the terracing of it, we know it's not going to be just dug out around, so there's going to be some fluctuations in those costs because there are going to be opportunities as it's terraced to create what we call islands, leave big monster trees, take out the other underbrush and stuff, but do those features without affecting the flow because of the width. And, Ron, and help me out here if I'm not saying it right, but...
That's all right, I understand that.
Where we're, we're doing those things, and that adds a little bit of cost into there, but also...
But were you sure that wasn't in the original work on Dunn on the thirty command?
Well, when we looked at it, the original work is, uh, it's based on Harris County Flood Control's estimate of a ten-dollar-per-cubic-yard removal. We went with that same amount where the, uh, amount of dirt removed is all an estimate at this point. Until the engineering is done and the actual design is done, the real cost is, is up there, but we don't know exactly what it is.
Okay, well, then, um, when you took the, you, you, the city of Friendswood portions, non-inflated, and again with the bridges and de-snagging removed, um, you ended up adding another ten million.
Well, um, there's, there's lots of things there. We, what we did was, we looked at the numbers, uh, and there's roughly a hundred properties up and down the creek that, uh, we would need to, that touch the creek. And so at some point, we're going to need those, those properties because we're looking at it, that a citizen's not going to voluntarily give up their property so that we can come in and terrace it. So we're going to have to purchase that. And so we didn't want to be very conservative on the, the amount that we would pay them. We would rather be conservative and overestimate that, and if we don't have to spend that extra, that's great, we're not spending it, that's a savings to the taxpayer. But also, we looked at the property values of the homes there, and we used, uh, wasn't it three hundred thousand on the, uh, the, uh, Harris County side? No, it's three hundred thousand on Galveston County, two fifty on Harris? Five, yeah, five hundred on Galveston, three hundred on the Harris County side, because by the time we started doing some buyouts, we figured the property values are going to go up. And also, when we start buying properties, people are going to want to jack the price up and negotiate all of that. So we figure that it's, it's going to be there, we need to account for it upfront. Uh, again, this is a line of credit. It's not, we're not out selling bonds right away. Uh, so what we don't spend, the taxpayer doesn't pay. So if we estimate it and we make sure that we've got the amount of money, then we, we don't have that problem.
But your recommendation was to, to, to go with the five percent increase at the front, so the taxpayer is paying.
Well, the, the taxpayer's only paying until the project gets going and they, they get their credit on the project, uh, in that, what you're, you're, it's a hundred and eighty million dollar project, we're still going to pay our piece, whether it's at the very front, the middle, or the back, and we're, the partners will do the others. But the other thing we have to look at is, what if we don't get a partner? What if we don't find somebody to come in and partner with us? We still have to do something because we still have to address flooding along Clear Creek and drainage issues along Clear Creek to satisfy our citizens because...
Let me ask, because you're leaning into kind of the next one. The original thirty-two million had a thirty percent contingency in it, and you guys have added another twenty-five percent inflation, so the total now is a fifty-five percent contingency from the original number. Can you explain the, the reason, the science behind that?
Uh, we've got the calculations there, which we will provide for you. There's just so much uncertainty in how much the project is going to cost, uh, especially now with Harris County wanting to accelerate their work from a ten-year fr, timeframe to a five-year timeframe, going to drive the cost up. We needed to build that in, and, uh, that's what we've done.
Okay, so we, but, but you're acknowledging we have a fifty-five percent contingency in now?
Yes, we acknowledge how, how, uh, the, uh, the project, how iffy it is in areas, and the fact that if we don't get a, a partner, we're going to have to go it alone.
So when you figured out the inflation rate at twenty-five percent, that, that, and you look at the numbers, that's assuming that the project's built at the very end of fifteen years, but it's actually going to be, get built along those ways. So did you graduate that, that inflation factor, or did you just assume that it was all going to be towards the end?
We, we graduated it. Help me out, Ron, here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Okay, but, but it's, it's...
I put on both teams, so I know both teams.
It's all right, I'm, I'm, he's doing fine, Phil's doing fine.
But what we're, what we're doing with that inflation is, we've put it in there because we know it's going to happen. Things are costing so much more, the materials are going up, the labor's going up, we're all seeing that. The counties who we've dealt with, we've talked to them, they're having to inflate their inflationary figures because their costs are going up, they're seeing the costs starting to, to skyrocket. They've got eight percent on some projects just because of the labor and materials of so much work going on in this area.
So let, so let me ask, so you mentioned the contingency and getting the twenty-five percent. Did you take into account Senate Bill seven and Senate Bill eight, which were just passed? Senate Bill eight specifically gives three point three billion dollars out of state funds specifically... Senate Bill 8 specifically gives $3.3 billion out of state funds, specifically to help cities and municipalities meet their 25%. So the state is putting in a bunch of money so that we can get to the 25%. Did you figure that into your calculations?
We looked at that in that we are going to be somebody that's competing amongst everyone else across the state for that money. And we have to prepare to what happens if we don't get that. What happens if we, if for some reason, by the time they get to our paperwork, the money's gone? What happens if they don't consider our project to meet their priorities in that?
But did you figure that bill in with the calculations? Did you guys look at that in there?
We looked at that, and we thought we have to account in case we do not qualify, we do not get that money from them, and we have to go it alone. Because the bottom line we were looking at is, whether we spend it or not, or I shouldn't say that. What we're looking at is the, this is the line of credit, and so we're asking for the authority to borrow that money. If we don't spend that money, we don't borrow that money, and the citizens not paying for it.
But in addition to the funds that were set up by the federal government and the state just recently, there's been $1.6 billion from the state for projects, the $3.3 billion for helping municipalities meet their percentages, and then the federal government just released $4.3 billion specifically for Harvey. So...
That's great news, Steve. Let me just interject. That's great news, but this project didn't account for, all it accounted for was the matching funds possible for any grant that it might get, not just for a specific, unless it's earmarked. If it's earmarked for Friendswood, Texas, that'd be great. Yeah, we're competing with everybody else around here, and as we've already seen, a lot of that money is being sucked up fast by other entities.
All right, that's it.
Thanks, Phil. You did a great job. Thank you.
Robert?
Ron, could you go back to that flat tax rate and the area where we were discussing the actual money that we would've saved if we stayed on a flat tax rate? It had 2011, 2013, 20, right when the bonds came in in 2013, you saw a 5 cent increase, but over time, the council was able to reduce that to effective tax rate. Keep going back a little bit further.
That's the one right there.
Okay, no, the one with the yellow.
Okay.
Okay, let's go, yeah, okay, right there. No, there's another one. Okay, where were you? It's a little bit longer, and it has the, no...
So tell me again what you're looking for.
It shows where they issued... Go back one more.
Is that the one?
Okay, that's showing the savings. Go back one more.
That's the, the one back is debt service.
Go two more back from there, Ron. One more.
Okay, this one right here.
That's the historical.
All right, see, okay, in 2003, we were looking at 55 or 7.
Well, actually, 6385 was the total.
63, 6385, okay. And then in 2013, looks like we went to...
5902.
5902, 5970, 5914, and then in 1819, 1616, they started really sticking with the effective tax rate, but at the same time, they were able to service their debt.
Sure.
Okay, so my problem is, is I don't really wanna ask the citizens of Friendswood to put aside money that, that we're not telling them what we're using that for. That $7 million, I know the council in 15, 16, 17, they battled really hard to try to give money back to the residents of Friendswood, because they're saying, hey, we're not gonna keep more than, than what it actually takes to service our debt. So you can move forward and you can see where that debt's being serviced, back where that yellow line was. Move forward just a little bit.
Two slides.
That right there, that's when it's retiring. So it seems to me, even if we do the 5 cents, we may be able to move down that, especially as these bonds are issued, to move, staying with the effective tax rate, maybe go 5 cents, but then as we move down and retire that over a 15-year period, we may, we may be able to lower our tax rates for our citizens based on what has happened, and that's the property values going up.
Yeah, so we're not, we're not saying this is absolutely gonna happen, we can't, we can't make you do it. What we want you to do is look at it and, and study the pros and cons of that.
But are you, are the citizens' recommendation is that we raise taxes on the residents of Friendswood by 5 cents?
In terms of the...
Serving the $80 million.
In terms of the package, that would be the maximum tax rate we believe that it would, that we would have to raise to do an $80 million bond. In fact, it could do a $90 million bond. Leaves $10 million in capacity.
And when we were prioritizing all of the different items, the five different items that were being looked at, no one in the citizens' group ever said, we should eliminate one of these over another and say, only put this before the voters, because I'm adamant that I believe all of these items need to go to the voters and let the voters decide. There may be some that want that civic center, but may not wanna see us spend the money on the parks. There may be residents that are more concerned about drainage, but don't wanna see the civic center. But I think it's imperative that we put all of that before the voters and not try to take off. So I'm just saying, the Citizens Committee did not say, hey, look, just put the drainage on there and let's see if we can pass that.
Well, that was run up the flagpole.
I'm sure.
Frankly, it was run up the flagpole. Let's just do that and forget about the rest of it till next time. But, but the balance of the committee said, these are viable projects, they're good projects, they're projects that, that affect the community as a whole, not just one segment of the community. And we can't say that the Drainage Committee doesn't affect the, as a whole, but all of them affect as a whole, and therefore, put them all, the recommendation was put them all on there for the citizens.
Well, I'm really glad to hear that, because I think it, it all needs to go before the voters and let it, let it all fly on its own merit. So I really appreciate you guys for really pulling all those things together for us to look at.
Very good, thank you.
I just have one question for you, Ron. When the, I guess it would've been the Streets Committee was looking at Friendswood Parkway, one of the big pluses for that, I thought, was that it could be utilized as an evacuation route. So was that ever considered as part of, because I liked that y'all put, or you're talking about packaging, the Public Works or the new Public Works, and with the drainage bit. One thing we found during Harvey is we had a whole bunch of little islands, and we could not even get around our own community. So I would've, I'm just wondering why that didn't, or did that discussion occur? Maybe that's a better question.
The discussion about putting Friendswood Parkway with drainage? No, it did not occur. We kept Friendswood Parkway, to my recollection, it did not. The idea of it being an evacuation route was discussed, but the packaging that way was not, to my recollection.
I see the value in that as an evacuation route.
Yeah, and there is value to that.
And then just, and I don't know how far down the road y'all went on this, but Pearland and Lake City both had very successful bond elections this past May, and one of the things they did to the question that you asked in Pearland is, in their drainage proposition, they included a facility. So they, and everything passed. So anyway, just comment, yeah, it might be good just to go, go see how they did it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So first off, thank you very much. I know it was, he called on me. Did you wanna go next? Oh, okay. Thank you very much. I know it was a lot of work for the entire committee, and I really appreciate it. I have several questions. So the 5 cents, when you arrived at 5 cents, was that generally the thinking of the committee that the community would not have heartburn over 5 cents, but anything more than 5 cents? Was that kind of what y'all were trying to stay at?
From a personal perspective, I'd say yes. I can't, I can't tell you that the committee voiced that in general. What we did say was, that was the amount that we arrived at in 2013, and it was acceptable.
Okay.
And by virtue of that, that should be, that should be our high-end target at this point. Anything above that might be more susceptible to failing.
So maybe some things were whittled out of this, because it would take that tax rate over the 5 cents then?
Not particularly, because we had $90 million worth of capacity, but yes, there was $115, $120 million worth of projects.
Okay.
All total, so yes, some got, they, it got whittled down.
And primarily because of the tax rate increase that would involve, okay. And then the other thing is, as I looked through several of the costs associated, specifically the swimming pool, the Friendswood Lakes extension, especially the Friendswood Lakes extension, $3 million, if I remember correctly, Parkway, Parkway extension. That doesn't seem like that would, that would do that.
No.
And, and then the pool, did you have experts, have we had, I mean, did staff say, we've had somebody out here, they've evaluated what it would cost to rebuild this pool or to fix the pool, and we need $2 million for that?
So the Friendswood Parkway item first, that is simply seed money to pursue transportation improvement program applications through HGAC. That's seed money to work with TechDOT on extending that roadway. The roadway in all likelihood will be a $15 to $18 million endeavor. It will require partners, much like the drainage discussion. With respect to the pool, we've had the project scoped, the actual cost of a new pool, and when we say pool these days, most municipalities are looking at resort-style pools. These aren't your standard lap pools, these are pools that have water slides and other features in them that make the facility more usable for families with kids of all ages. So the two and a half isn't a repair or replacement cost for it, it's simply phasing the pool project overall. So when the committee first presented their initial findings at $128 million, collectively, the group's concern was, we may not be able to float a bond of that magnitude. So staff offered some phasing opportunities that may be of benefit. So for instance, we're talking Phase 2 of the Public Safety Building today, that original project was including both Phase 1 and Phase 2. However, for simplicity purposes and only stomaching what we can handle, we broke it up into two phases.
Okay, because I know that it would be a disaster to go out and tell people, we're going to do these things, and we need a 5 cent increase, and then we don't get to those things, because the numbers were actually a lot higher than not, and it seems like there, there's an awful lot of seed money in this bond, so it's not necessarily going to be things that we see very quickly, or may not even, you know, may not even get the rest of the money. So it's a little, that's a hard sell, I think, or, you know, a hard sell, so...
It's a lot harder to sell that than a building that you've got.
Right. When you can say, this is what we're going to build, and this is what it's going to cost, or this is the road we're gonna put in, and this is what it's gonna cost.
And so that was sort of the dilemma of the Drainage Committee, you know, how much do you recommend, and how do we know we're gonna get that money, as Phil said? And then, and then the lines, the Food Line Building has, has other partners, the Friendswood Parkway has other partners, so a lot of this is relying on that. Bear in mind that, that all we're saying is that this is the matching portion, it's not gonna build the project in all respects.
And we're pretty comfortable with the total amount, so the matching numbers should be pretty good.
Yeah, this, this slide shows project amount, so you can see that Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, for example, was $15 million, and the adjusted amount was $3, to be able to give the city the matching funds for a transportation improvement project for that project.
And my last comment is that, that Food Line Building, to me, that's, that's non-negotiable. That is a public safety issue. We were cut off from many of our citizens in the community during this last storm. We have the opportunity for that, we have to have that money. I said something to Moe earlier, when I first went through these slides, and said, I think it should be that amount of money, $2 million, that's, is that seed money too? Or is that actual renovation money? Should be included in multiple propositions if we break this up into five, so if something fails, we've got the money to, or we find the money someplace else, because that, to me, has to happen in order to serve the people on that side of the creek. We don't need to be cut off from one another again, so...
So we didn't think about putting public safety, put the Food Line Building in four, three or four different propositions?
I know, but I'm just saying, I know what you could do, what the attorneys can do.
Right, but that is, that would be a final decision for the council, in terms of how to structure we give you.
But the money, but the money for the Food Line Building is for restoration only, it's not for the purchase of the building at all.
That is correct.
It's just for restoring it.
That is correct.
Okay.
And ultimately, the renovation costs for that facility are far in excess of $2 million, it's more $5 and a half, $6 million. Again, not wanting to bite off more than we can chew from a voter's perspective, we didn't wanna go out there for the $6 million on this project, for the $15 million on Friendswood Parkway, so on and so forth, to where the bond proposition overall was $128 million and scare voters away. So we're gonna phase the renovations. So the $2 million is just for renovations for the first phase of Food Line.
And our Public Works is already in the Food Line. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That is correct.
Okay, and we have computers, and we have cable systems, we have all operations go in Public Works, right?
Yes and no. So we have 98% of the facility operating right now, of our Public Works Department operating out of that facility. We cannot relocate our mechanic shop and some of our large equipment areas, simply because we would be cutting into a facility that we do not own. We do have a lease purchase agreement with them. The only reason we haven't purchased a building to date is, we haven't finalized a project with FEMA, and the finalization of that's not due to lack of effort on our part. FEMA continues to change program managers associated with it.
And the finalization of that with FEMA would be enough for us to purchase the remaining part that we haven't already leased through payments?
That combination of our emergency shelter application with Harris County for the CDBG DR funds, and some fund balance use, we have the money to...
So if all that comes through, that will all be paid for free and clear?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so just refresh my memory, Steve, you can help me with this, on the original drainage summary that came to council that you were involved with, the total number was what?
$32 million.
$32 million.
$2 million, yeah.
And of that $32 million, how much was in the raising of the two bridges?
Four.
Okay, so we removed, and the de-snagging was, I guess, what, half a million?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
So we removed $4.5 million from that total, which would put us at $27.5.
Right.
And now we're gonna go to the citizens requesting basically $47.5.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Let's see, street summaries, I have a problem asking the citizens for money just to set it aside and not do anything with it. So if the $3 million would be utilized to finish out Friendswood Parkway from 528 to Lake City, I'm okay with that. I think...
That's not...
Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, but essentially, it will all be the same. It's the same road. We're talking about the same road. Okay, so I would be okay with that. I have a little difficulty stomaching, going out and asking for the citizens to start paying immediately on $3 million that we may or may not use in the next 20 years.
So the approach...
I completely agree with you about that.
Thank you.
The approach would be similar to the drainage projects. We would get, simply get the authorization to issue the debt, but until we had a commitment from with another partner to build the roadway, we would not issue the debt.
Correct, but we have bigger fish to fry on that part of the roadway, do we not? With property rights issues, with easement issues, with pipeline right-of-way issues, we've got a lot of hurdles to get from 528 to Pearland Parkway, if I'm not mistaken.
There are easement acquisition and right-of-way concerns associated with it, much like any of the projects that we're pursuing. The bigger crux of it, and you'll hear it Monday night when we have the update to the citywide traffic study, is we're seeing tremendous growth on either side of Friendswood, either in Pearland or Lake City, and we're the individual stuck in the middle, that if we don't have any alternative roadways that go north, south, east, west, we're...
I completely agree with you, and I 100% support building from Lake City Parkway to Pearland Parkway and calling that road whatever you wanna call it, making that happen. I have a problem going to the voters, asking them to pay for $3 million in hopes that that happens.
Sure.
You know what I'm saying? Okay, so I got a little bit of concern with that. And help me, Moe, with the traffic enhancement money. Could we not get TechDOT to fund a lot of these based off of traffic studies?
So the short answer is, we can try, but as we've seen with a number of our efforts throughout the years, they're not willing to move very fast.
Correct.
And so these are intended, much like, and I don't mean to keep going back to drainage, but the same principle applies. The city of Friendswood is not responsible for Clear Creek. We've never been responsible for Clear Creek.
Correct.
But the intent of the subcommittee's efforts and that of the citizens' advisory team is to find a way in which we can spur much-needed projects in our community. Whereas in previous years, we weren't willing to put our money where our mouth is, we are now, and in San... And this, in same respects, that applies to TechDOT as well, that if we want to get them to start focusing on Friendswood and doing these efforts, we need to put some funding up forth for partnerships.
Right. Okay, so, so, and again, this is just a question. This is not, not going after anything. If, if I were, if I'm the state of Texas and Friendswood says, you know what, we'll pay to fix that road, I'll say, good. Good for you. Enjoy yourself. If I have to listen to citizens of Friendswood beat me up every day over, it's our responsibility to fix this issue, then I'm likely to use money that I'm already collecting from the citizens to, to, to spend to remedy that project, or that problem. So, anyway, so that, that's my comments on that. That's kind of my feelings on that. The Parks Project, how, how much does it cost to do the green paving park, parking space versus the just standard concrete or asphalt parking?
Good question. This is the expert.
I don't know about that. Typically, what I've researched, cost for installation of green parking ranges from 550 to 650 a square foot. That, that's not counting prepping the site, so if you'd like removing concrete, that's not included. But to prep, to have a clean site...
Okay, so let me hold you real, real quick right there. I would assume that we're not planning to remove any concrete other than a curb to add parking, but any additional parking that went in would be constructed of this green parking, paving, whatever?
Yes and no. At Old City Park, yes, we'd be installing green parking on, on a natural grade.
Correct. Okay.
The fire station site, it was talked about much in our committee, that is very much a eyesore.
Mm-hmm.
Did not represent Stevenson Park at all.
I agree with you.
Take an old slab and paint some stripes on it, call it a day. So, we would like to remove that, all that concrete.
Okay.
Install the green parking there.
Okay.
It'd be a beautiful enhancement to Stevenson Park. It's, do you still keep the parking?
Yeah, okay.
It just looks a lot better.
Okay, so...
And it'd be utilized for other, other features.
Okay, so the 550, you said 550 to 650 a square foot, does not include any site work prep?
Not removing concrete, no.
Okay. And then, what would that cost be for? And I'm not just talking about Stevenson Park. I recognize it's got its own issues. What would that cost be for concrete or asphalt?
Typically, it ranges anywhere from, what I was, done in my, my own project, even close to, it's about 550 a foot.
So, it's about the same price?
About the same.
It's about the same price. Okay, and, and then, again, just for clarification, the, the, it's grass that makes this green?
Yes.
And it's grass that's not going to die when it gets run over by cars routinely?
Correct. It, it is a steel grid system, kind of like a honeycomb. You lay it in, and you can fill it with decorative gravel, or you could do grass, or you could do both. So, we've seen installations around the country. The company, I look at, is here in Houston. They've done installation all across the country, and many companies in Houston are going to that because it's, it's cheaper, and it has the detention capacity. Instead of...
Yeah.
Increasing storm art, it will sort of...
If it's no more expensive or not double the cost of, of asphalt, or, or obviously, asphalt's cheaper than concrete, we know progressively, but then, then I'm okay with it. I don't have an issue with that. Okay, then, the last question that I'll ask is the civic slash senior building. So, I know, I know that the, I always show up late to the party on this deal. So, I, I know that the, I know that the school district is planning to go out for a bond in the spring, I believe. And, and their initiative is to, they don't want Klein anymore, right? The, the school Klein. I went and approached them about maybe utilizing the old junior high for a senior activity building, and I certainly, certainly understand and respect and appreciate the desire to have a senior activity center located downtown, right? And I, and, and again, if the citizens vote to approve this, I'm okay with it. I'm just recommending that we could probably save $5 million and get twice the space if we renovated Klein Elementary School than what we're going to get for $7.5 million over here. Was that looked at?
That's a, that's a question that I don't know the answer to. Brian, do you?
I did have a conversation with them.
Yeah, I did as well.
Did the Facilities Committee have a... We didn't contact school and park. It was a junior high.
Okay. Okay, and, and in fairness, to be publicly stated, that's all dependent on the school district getting their bond approved in the spring.
Right.
So, if they don't get their bond approved, then the kids are going to stay at Klein. But the initiative from the school district is that the land that was donated to the school district from West Ranch, they plan on building an elementary school there. They do not want to maintain Klein, and therefore, they were willing, at least that, through my discussions, was willing in, to enter into a, like, $1 for 25-year lease agreement or something.
So, would it be okay for Robin to speak?
Absolutely. Yep.
Yeah, so I, I had a short conversation with them.
Can, can you go to the microphone?
I had a short conversation with Thad about it, and because they have not, they're just in the talks.
Correct.
Couldn't include any of that in.
Okay.
And so, it, it is open for discussion, and so, one, I would correct you, instead of saying the senior citizen center, it's a civic center.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I think if we go forward with the, that proposition, that we can do the language so that it's not set whether it's over off of Willow Wick or whether it's on Klein, but it is an option that they're open to, but he couldn't commit to anything because the school has not...
Right.
Set their stuff in stone yet.
Agreed, and, and that's the same conversation we had.
Yeah.
So, so my question is more, what is the appetite in the community? Would the, you know, what is the feel? Would the, would the, I'm sure as far as a civic center is concerned, there's no issue whether it's here or there. But for seniors, I would guess that they're very accustomed to going downtown, and they love it being centrally located. Did y'all get any sense whatsoever about if that moved out to where Klein is, that's going to be a big issue?
I don't think, I mean, they can talk to that, but I don't think any of that was part of it.
One of the items that was discussed was the proximity of the existing facility being near the library, because the people who utilize the civic center also utilize the library quite a bit.
Correct.
So, they do like that proximity, but I can't speak for them whether they would like Klein over where, where they have right now. I don't, I don't know if that would be an issue to them or not.
Okay, so, it, it sounds like it, it wasn't really a topic because the school district doesn't know whether or not it's going to be available. And, and I understand that. I, I would just suggest, and, and maybe it, maybe it's null and void, there's nothing we can do about it, but I know that we could renovate Klein for $2 million and have three times the space that you have. We actually went through the numbers, right? What was the...
Yeah, so, if anything, we're... We're actually doing that.
Yeah, but, so we've got 7.7 million to build the new one. It wouldn't cost more than two and a half, I don't think, to do whatever you wanted to do of it.
That's owned by the Friendswood Independent School.
That's owned by the ci, it's owned by the citizens of the community.
No, that's, that's Friendswood Independent.
Which is paid for by the citizens of the community.
Completely different.
Same taxes?
No, it's not.
It's taxes.
No, it's not.
It's citizens' taxes. City of Friendswood taxes.
Well, regardless, if we were able to enter into an agreement, that was an acceptable decision.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It would be cheaper than building another...
Correct, and that's the only point I'm making. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting one or the other, and I don't know that one or the other.
So, that debate might take place when you're developing the, the language of the proposition, to see how flexible you can have it.
Correct.
You might, you might, I, I don't know whether you could have your cake and eat it too. I don't know, but that, that's where that argument, or that discussion would take place.
I mean, the, the appetite in the community may be that they want to spend $7.5 million to build a new civic center, and, and I'm okay with that, too. I'm not arguing against that in any way, shape, or form. I'm just suggesting that, as, as somebody that is responsible for budgeting, that if there's an opportunity to save money and double the size of the property, then I personally would jump all over that. So, that's just my comments, and, and thank you all for all that you did, for putting this together, Ron. I surely appreciate it. You guys have done a fantastic job.
They put it together. I'm just the guy that, I'm the master.
Leading it, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and really do appreciate you guys' efforts and, and all that you've done, and I, I think it's the, so, I, I won't give all, I won't give you too much glory here, so... As a responsible, I, I feel that it's a responsibility of council that we have a balanced budget amendment. So, I feel that budgeting-wise, we should balance the revenues with the expenses year after year. If we need to increase expenses, we increase revenues, not increase revenues in an effort to hold on to it so that we have a $20 million surplus above the 90 days, and we knowingly do that to the citizens. So, I oppose that. So, so I, I understand what you're talking about. And, and, and so, anyway, again, thank you, thank you guys for what you've done. I think that this is the best form of, of spending that, that, that we can have because it is the responsibility of you guys to go to the citizens and for the citizens to decide and let us know whether or not they approve of spending that money. Isn't that nice? Instead of us just telling you, we're going to raise your taxes, and you have to guess what we're going to spend it on? I think it's a great, great concept. I love the fact that it passed in 2013, and I hope that we get the improvements that we need in this upcoming bond election. So, thanks. Appreciate it.
I have a question before he moves on. Since Klein was not even thought of while the committee was meeting about the civic center, and that, now that it may be in play, how do we find out how the citizens group, especially that looked at that, would feel about that?
So, from a logistics standpoint, I don't intend to get any final decisions from council this evening. This was simply an effort to present to y'all the recommendations of the team and for y'all to perseverate on it over the next couple of months and ultimately determine if you call an election in August, to be on the bouts in November. We can take this, the, the senior citizens group out of the cat and go visit with the school district to see if there's any interest in partnering with them to pursue Klein. One thing that needs to be taken into consideration in addition to a, a bond election next year for the school district is their timeline of when they plan on building the school in West Ranch. So, even if they had a bond election next May, they may or may not build a school in West Ranch for another five or 10 years, depending on growth on the southern reaches of the city. So, that would obviously impact our ability to, to get a civic center now.
Well, I, I know for a fact now that they have people whose backyards are up against Klein, and they're busing them to Westwood.
Correct.
So, they would, they would change that as quickly as they can. So, another question on that. If, if the bond passes and, and, and the money in the bond for the civic center is 7.7 million, and obviously, we're not moving on that before the school district has their bond election, and then the school district comes to us and says, hey, look, if you guys are interested, we're either going to, we're going to bulldoze Klein and sell it, or we'll lease it to you. If we only spent, say, $2 million of the seven and a half, what happens to the other $5.5 million?
So, it, it depends on how we...
All hypothetical.
Hypothetically, it depends on how the, the bond language is written. First of all, to see if we can apply funds that were intended, if we didn't specify the location, we have a lot of flexibility, and we simply have the ability to spend 7-point something million on a civic center. If the flexibility's there, we just don't issue the debt. So, you have the authorization to issue up to 7.7. You may only issue two, and then the remaining debt stays to be used on another facility if the bond language were written appropriately.
Or it just never gets issued.
Or it never gets issued.
Perfect. Okay, that, that's all. That was just for clarification.
So, the new guy goes last? Is that the rule?
The new guy goes last.
I haven't gone yet.
Oh, that's right. I, I like how it's laid out in the five choices, because I think it does allow people to prioritize, you know, what we need. Was there any other options you all looked at, at how to bundle these together? Well, certainly, the, the, the big debate was whether to bundle Public Works or Drainage or not. So, we looked at that as an option. If we put, if we took Public Works out and, and then had public facilities, for example, and maybe lumped Civic Center with Public Works, that would have been an option, but ultimately, this, so, so, yeah, there were discussions about that, but most of them logically sat in the, in the place that they are, parks, transportation, and then it was just a debate about how to bundle the others, so...
Yeah, I just, I ask, because I just, I always think about, well, Drainage is the number-one priority. It's Public Works, it's always going to deal with that whenever there's an issue.
And, and that was, that was the reason to bundle it together, but the facility is actually bundled with the Public Works project itself. So, it just, it, it, for us, for, for most of us, it was a logical connection.
Second question, going to the parks, the $2 million on sidewalks, is there any, where that is, or any explanation? Oh, the street, the, the street one, the parks was my next question.
Oh, it's in the streets.
It's in the, yeah, it's in the streets.
I, I would say our, our initial recommendation was to start out with a, a trail and sidewalk master plan, something that connected parks, connected existing facilities, specifically identifies gaps, going back again to the greatest use, greatest number of citizens benefiting.
So, did y'all, did y'all look at areas such as 2351, you know, towards Pearland sidewalks there?
We didn't specifically look at areas. We were more specifically looking at the general concept of a, of a master plan.
Okay. Next question on the parks, this may be a question for you, Brett. The, the gateway entrance to Stevenson Park, I saw that was a decent amount. Is that something can be looked at, at maybe somebody donating, or, I mean, is there any, is there was some expenditure there? Is that can be put somewhere else that maybe can be donated funds?
No, the gateway entrance is referring to the fire station site.
Okay.
Creating that. It was talked about, not only with our committee, but the entire citizens team thought very strongly that it's very much a eyesore, it's not reflective on the city. That's a one-acre site. If you sold that on the free market, it'd be worth $500,000 or $600,000. Of course, the city would never sell it. That's just to emphasize how valuable that land is. And right now, how it's being used or utilized is not reaching any more close to that value. So, this, this would be something we have to get, keep it really beautiful in, in the Parks Department. Let's, let's create a beautiful entrance to Stevenson Park. While maintaining, it's still, it's still being parking, so, about 100 parking spaces there. Still keep the parking, but you make it beautiful and make it a great entrance, so, that's what we're...
Yeah, yeah, I just, I was kind of curious where that, how it was going to lay out. That makes sense, though.
There's no detailed plans. That's something KFB would have to be heavily involved in. I have detail, uh, detailed plans on that.
I think that's all I had. I, I appreciate, you know, that whatever comes out of this, I mean, we don't know, but the time that everybody put into it can never be replaced, and I greatly appreciate everything everybody did on this.
Thank you. Just as a follow-up to Skipper's comments about the sidewalks, it was pointed out that there, they, they've not set any priorities, but one priority that's always been around is the school, safe school routes. So, if you were thinking about 2351, it might be a Westwood sidewalk to Westwood or something like that, but there's no real plan for how that would be used. like that, but there's no real plan for how that would be used.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking of that area, just, it's like across from Judah Funeral Home, you kind of have some gaps there along 518 there, that if anybody's coming down there, there's nowhere, they're going to have to get onto 518, and that traffic gets pretty backed up, so.
So, real quick, was there any debate about whether to put the sidewalks with the parks versus the roads, since it's designed to connect the parks?
I don't recall any discussion about that at all.
Okay, I was just asking. Okay. All right.
Well, hey, no, back to Klein for just a second. I think the school district's going to find out that 10 acres is too valuable to a home developer to even talk to us about, you know, a dollar a year, whatever. I think that, that 10 acres is going to be prime real estate, and, you know, we're going to find this out as soon as they talk to a developer, see what, kind of check Elright for. There's some homes in there, so 30, 40 homes in there, so. We'll find out. I think, like a few council members have alluded to, you know, there's a little sticker shock when, you know, we got a briefing from Steve and his team, you know, to the tune of 32 million, and now it's, I don't know, 40, 47, 49 million, you know, there's a little bit there that, a little bit scary, you know? The bottom line to me is, what will the voters vote for? You know? If they'll vote for 49 million, great, you know, and if we don't spend it all, that's even better, but bottom line, question to you, Ron, is, will the voters vote for $80 million?
So, yeah, so I've got this magic...
You do, yeah. You get paid the big bucks.
Yeah, the big bucks, yeah, right. So, so I'm going to give you an answer that's worth what you pay me, is I have no idea.
Exactly, yeah.
Give them a chance, and that was the point. And in terms of the discussion about the size of the drainage compared to what people are used to, I mean, drainage alone is almost twice as much as what the entire bond issue was in 2013. The sentiment among the entire group was that drainage is important, and we can't let that get by us, and we've got to be sufficiently funded in order to be able to do the things we need to do over, over the long haul. And I'm not second-guessing the cities committee, I'm only presenting the drainage committees of the CAT, their, their concern for the same thing, and how they came up with the additional monies. But, but as we said earlier, you know, that several of us stand ready to, if and when you do call the election, stand ready to help try to get it passed. And, and we've got, so far, we've got a pretty good track record, but that doesn't mean, doesn't mean it'll happen. I mean, they failed before, bond issues in Friendswood have failed before, so. That's very good news.
That was, that was smart thinking. Well, I know how this council thinks, and they're going to want to stew on this for a little bit, and Marad, I don't know if you planned on throwing something on the agenda for next Monday night to talk again, or, or if you just want to let it sit for a while. I know we need to vote on it by our August meeting, because you've got to have ballot language.
Correct.
Ready in August for a November election, so.
Correct. So I have it tentatively on the agenda for next week as well, but by August, definitely we have to have this ironed out so that we can call for an election.
Has a work session next Monday night?
Yes.
Okay. That's not a bad idea, because we can invite Ron back and pummel him some more, and, you know, we'll have our questions sharpened up a little bit.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I think the last slide said, "We stand adjourned," I believe. Let me see that.
I seem to remember you volunteering to be the pinata.
Yeah, right.
If, I mean, the volunteer...
I am, I've been that a lot.
You're telling me that if Mayor Pro Tem John Scott invited you next week, you would not come?
You're always welcome.
Yes, exactly.
Always welcome.
If I'm needed, I'll do my best. I've got, you know, sometimes have other commitments.
We know you will.
I understand, yeah.
It's the first Monday of every month.
Marad's going to be your spokesperson. He's going to, he's going to have to answer. Yes.
Yes. I'll give you 50% of it.
So, Mayor, before we leave this, let me just thank the Citizens Advisory Committee one more time for all the work that you all have done.
It's one thing we always say, volunteerism is strong in Friendswood, and, you know, we put the call out when we need help, and, boy, the groves of people show up to help, and we appreciate that, so. Take a break. All right, we got one more item, discussion of possible action regarding the naming of a city facility. Let me make a motion here.
Second.
Let me make the motion. I make a motion that we name the area at the front of Lake Friendswood after former Mayor Paul Schrader. So essentially, what I'm saying is, we don't have a name for that, sort of that entrance area at Lake Friendswood, I would, I'm, my motion is that we call that Schrader Park at Lake Friendswood, or Schrader Park at Lake Friendswood. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
I just don't personally feel that we should be naming any of these facilities after people who were mayors or city council or anything like that. I just have a problem with this, you know, finding some good old boys around and saying, let's go name this after, this park after him. If someone has died, and they really made a big contribution to, to the citizens of Friendswood, then yeah, maybe we should name something after him. But Paul hasn't lived in Friendswood in how many years? 20 years? I guess he served twice as a mayor, and now we're going to name something after him. I'm not even sure how it came up that we were going to name something after him, but, you know, I love a lot of people that have gotten things named after them, but I don't really see the need for, for naming facilities after council members or mayors. It's just my own personal feeling on it, that's all. And it just, it just kind of rubs me, Ron, that's all.
Well, I'm the good old boy that submitted this application, naming Paul Schrader. Paul Schrader did some great things for the city. In case you don't know, that's his picture at the lower left, you know, pictures of the, all the guilty over there on the wall. That's Paul Schrader, lower left, and, you know, he merits this honor, I think, and that's why I sent the paperwork for him. Trish?
Well, I've had the opportunity to be involved in naming things, or to be, to watch very closely. And, you know, like you said earlier, this community is a community of volunteers, I mean, not just at the city level, but the school level, the churches, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Youth League, I mean, you just go on and on. And most people don't expect any kind of recognition, and there's always controversy, no matter how good that person was, and how much they worked at whatever they did, and how much they contributed. There are always people that, you know, don't like it, or find fault with it. Of all the things, though, in the city and all the volunteers, I do think the mayor is different. There are a lot of expectations on the mayor's position and the mayor's job, and I've had the opportunity to watch very closely the last six mayors, and many of them trying to raise a family and support their family while being mayor, and they all stepped up to the job, they all stepped up to the, and sometimes to the detriment of their own personal lives. And so, we have just given little tokens, I think, of appreciation. This council has never talked about a tradition of naming anything after a mayor. I've been told that there's a tradition of that. We haven't discussed it. I'm glad that you rescinded your recommendation for the gazebo, but I have no problem honoring someone who did, for free, spent 12 years giving of themselves as a community servant in a big way, a much bigger way than most people. And, you know, we have two trees named after two mayors. We have a street that goes just, it's a dead-end street to the, to the Public Safety Building. I mean, we do have an amphitheater for one, that's probably the biggest thing, but the others are just, to me, just an acknowledgement of what they did. So I went out to the, to the park, took a picture of the plaque that's out there. I thought about Paul Schrader. I was a grown-up with the job and kids when he was mayor here and actually lived here. I don't know if anybody else on council, I don't know, were you living here, Sally? And so, and I do know that he was responsible, or he was at least the mayor, when the acquisition of that lake was being discussed, and he led that. And I went out there, and I saw the current mayor and council that's on the plaque, which is appropriate when it was dedicated, and I saw the list of the park board, and there were people on that list that were, that did not live in Friendswood at the time that park was dedicated. But I was happy to see them included on that plaque, because they had made contributions. And I verified that with James Tony today, because I thought, I don't think this person was living here then, I'm not sure this person was living here then. But I was glad, I thought it was a classy thing to do, to honor their volunteerism and their involvement, even though they had moved on at that time. I think this is something that, I mean, obviously, Paul Schrader, for 12 years, six as a council member, six as a mayor, and then he's gone on, I'm sure he has no, you know, no interest even in having anything named after him, but that, that lake, that park is a jewel of Friendswood. And he did have the vision. He was the one with the vision. I don't see anything wrong with honoring someone in the past that set us on a course that we're enjoying today. And so, our mayor has asked us to do this, and I, I'm going to support our mayor and support the contributions of Mayor Schrader in a very nominal way, really, for all the work that he did, even though it was many years ago. And, and then I hope that we move on and start talking about this bond issue and the other things that these 75 people that sat on this committee are now contributing for the future of Friendswood and shaping what Friendswood will look like in the future.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll just be very brief. I was here, my husband, as Ron alluded to, was the, started as Parks and Rec Director here back in, actually, before Ron got here. He got here in '88. Roger got here in '89, and it was, well, Paul Schrader was mayor at the time, and he did have that vision, and it was a jewel. And you actually had a hard time getting back there and even finding a kitten, you might have been on council at that time even, I think. But they called it the sand pit to start with. It didn't have a name when we first started, it was a sand pit. And I would, I think that Paul Schrader did an amazing job here in Friendswood as a council member and also as a mayor, and I think it is a lovely tradition, whether it's written down somewhere or not, that someone who gives of their time freely to be mayor of Friendswood, I think we should honor them. I think that's the least that we could do. So I will be supporting this as well. So thank you for selecting this mayor.
Anybody else? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Adjourned? Thank you.
Thank you.